Order, we begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Commissioner Harper Pedersen.
Present.
Vice Chair Gutierrez is absent tonight. And Chair Silverman.
Present. So, the next item up is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. Does anyone have public comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the minutes, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Does anyone have any rec-- changes to the minutes, requested changes?
I didn't.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the July 21st, 2014 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right. Public hearing. The procedure for the public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public meeting. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form if they'd like to, found by the door, and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speakers should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The first item is 1532 School Street.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'm presenting to you this evening the request for design review approval for a 65-square-foot addition that is within the required stream setback. The 5,475-square-foot site is located on the north side of School Street between Chestnut Street to the west and Elm Street to the east. Pulgas Creek runs across the rear of the property. The existing use is single-family residential, and the property is owned RS6 Single Family Residential and has a general plan land use designation of single-family residential. The total square footage of the addition is 349 and 1/2 square feet. This square footage is split between 2,800-- or, excuse me, 284.5 square feet added on to the front-left corner of the house to facilitate the creation of a covered porch, foyer, reconfigured master suite and half-bath, and 65 square feet in the rear, and the purpose is to bump out the dining room to be aligned with the rear wall of the kitchen. Total resident square footage will be 2,231 square feet, which is below the 3,000-square-foot floor area threshold, so review would normally be done at staff level for a project of this size. Because the applicant is requesting a stream setback exception, the project is elevated to the planning commission for review. To construct the addition at the rear of the property, the applicant is requesting consideration of a 13-foot setback from top of creek bank, which matches a portion of the existing rear house wall. An existing deck extends beyond the top of creek bank across much of the rear of the This is a view of Pulgas Creek, looking both west and east from the subject property. The 65-square-foot infill addition will be to the left of the kitchen, which is on the right of this photo. The wall of the kitchen will be extended straight across to create a larger dining As you can see, the existing deck already protrudes into the existing creek setback. So, these are the required design review findings that the planning commission must make in order to approve the project, and staff is confident that you can make all of them. And this would be a recommendation that you grant design review approval to allow for the construction of an addition 13 feet from the top of creek bank and within the required stream setback at 1532 School Street. And here is the formal motion, should you choose to make it, and at this time I'm available to answer any questions you may have of me.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Just a couple. So, I just want to confirm, it didn't look like they were removing any trees or anything.
No, I don't believe they are.
Okay. And the second issue that I wondered about was, how do they go about preventing and making sure that none of the construction material gets into the creek?
Well, a condition was added to the approval document. Let me just go there. Lisa's telling me it's condition number 12. The applicant shall protect the creek during construction and abide by all best management practices, and that was a recommendation from the Building and Public Works Departments.
And then, the last question which just came to mind as I was looking at this, is, does the deck also get reconfigured as part of this?
No, there's no change to the deck proposed.
So, they just essentially cut out a piece of the deck, everything else stays the same?
Exactly.
Okay.
Anyone else have any further questions for staff?
I didn't have any questions.
Seeing none, did the applicant want to make a presentation or speak to the commission? Don't have to. No? Are there any-- are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? With that, any discussion among the commission?
No, and I'm sorry, I should have asked this prior, but were there any objections received by staff or any comments from the public received by staff prior to this?
No, no response was received in response to the public notice, which was sent out to a 300-foot radius and also advertised in a local newspaper.
Thank you, Jill. Sorry about the--
No apologies.
--order of that.
Any other comments from the commission? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission approve the request for-- oops, am I on the right one? No, I'm sorry. I move that the planning commission approve the request for design review approval for 1532 School Street, APN 050-161-020, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and is conditioned in the code compliance certificate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Congratulations, whoever it is. Yay. All right. Moving on to item B, 436 Laurel Street.
Good evening again, planning commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'm presenting the staff report for the consideration of a request for design review, conditional use permit, and tentative map approval associated with the construction of a new five-unit development at 436 Laurel Street. The subject site sits on the west side of Laurel Street between Bush Street and Holly Street. It is a flat 7,011-square-foot lot currently developed with a single-family residence, which is proposed to be demolished in between multifamily residential development on either side. Properties in the vicinity are a mix of multifamily, commercial, and a community assembly used directly across the street. The property is owned RM59 multifamily medium density and has a corresponding general plan land use designation of multiple-family medium density, which allows up to 59 dwelling units per acre. The applicant requests three separate entitlements: design review approval for the proposed structure, a conditional use permit for an exception to a building design standard, and approval of a tentative map. All three are subject to review and approval by the planning commission. The property located at 436 Laurel Street is listed on the second priority list for historic resources. In order for planning staff to make the determination that this project was ultimately exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, the applicant was required to retain a historical resources consultant to prepare a study for peer review by the city's own historical consultant. After careful analysis, the applicant's qualified expert determined that the structure did not meet the eligibility criteria to be listed on the California Register, and the city retained consultant concurred with the finding based on adequate analysis. So, we'll move into the design review phase. At grade level, nine at-grade covered parking spaces are accessed by a 16-foot-wide two-way driveway, including one parallel space, along with four short-term bike parking spaces, which are out to the front of the building, and one long-term bicycle parking stall, which is located more to the rear of the building, right here. It also contains storage, a covered front porch leading to an entry lobby, two sets of stairs, and trash and recycling containers. Total ground floor square footage is 4,255 square feet. The second floor and third floors contain four dwelling units total, each with two bedrooms and two and 1/2 bathrooms, and measuring between 1,400 and 1,500 square feet apiece. The fourth floor will house the fifth unit, which measures 1,983 square feet in area and contains two bedrooms and three bathrooms. The architectural style of the structure is Spanish colonial, using integral color stucco painted eclipse, which you should have had within your packets. On the bulk of the exterior walls, metal-clad wood windows and doors in bronze, stained wood trim and entry doors in oak brown, and wrought iron railings. The roof will be done in Cordova clay tiles in the Franciscan blend color. This style uses a variety of window sizes and types on a single building, providing accents such as wood corbels, tile roofing, and prolific use of balconies. Each unit features balconies and decks providing both required and open space and optional Juliet balconies on the front, rear, and left-side elevation, as viewed from Laurel Street looking toward the property. The proposed fencing is not shown on these renderings for clarity's sake. Extensive new landscaping is proposed in a conceptual plan, consisting most notably of three 24-inch box Japanese maples interspersed with star jasmine, Provence lavender, and rosemary throughout the front yard. Rear yard plantings include six 24-inch box potocarpus, several ferns, and low grassy plantings. Climbing vines are proposed on the right-side yard fence, and clumping Buddha's belly bamboo is proposed at the left-side yard fence, with the exception of climbing vines, which will screen the parallel parking space at the front of the garage. A fence is proposed around the property in combination with the plantings. None of the trees proposed for removal require a permit to do so, because they're mostly black acacias or fruit trees. The project requires-- excuse me, the project complies with all the relevant standards, except for a building design standard for which the applicant has requested exception, which will be discussed in the following section. It is consistent with several general plan policies. A recessed covered porch provides a prominent entrance into the development. Exterior entrances to units are in the form of a shared lobby at the ground floor of the building. There is an exterior access corridor located above the ground floor that provides access to four of the units. The fifth unit is a penthouse unit. The roofline is broken up into numerous segments so as not to create a large-scale bulky appearance. To the extent feasible, windows and balconies have been placed to avoid direct sightlines into the neighboring properties. The planning division had this project peer-reviewed by a city retained licensed architect who suggested a few edits. These edits included lengthening of the windows on the front and rear elevations and removal of shutters at these same windows, provision of a recessed entry, and a reduction in mass of the elevator shaft. These are reflected in the most recent set of plans and renderings. So, this is the building design standard from which the applicant seeks relief, transition areas, where new multifamily developments are built adjacent to existing lower-scaled residential development. The facade facing the existing lower-scaled residential development shall be designed to provide architectural relief and interest while also respecting the scale of adjacent neighbors. Specifically, A, height, full-height recesses, a minimum of 10 feet deep, shall be provided along the facade to break the building into smaller discrete masses. Planning staff has typically determined that the lower-scaled residential development to refer to those buildings that are of lesser height than the proposed project. These are the immediately adjoining properties. The top is the adjacent property to the right, as viewed from Laurel Street, and the bottom image shows the two properties adjoining the left. The subject property is only 45 feet wide compared to a 100-foot-wide lot on the right. The two lots adjacent to the left of the property are 55 feet wide immediately adjoining and 100 feet wide as you travel further south down Laurel. Exceptions to the building design standards may be granted with approval of a conditional use permit based on the finding that adequate design features have been incorporated to create visual variety and avoid large-scale bulky or monolithic appearance. The architect who performed the peer review felt the architect should-- felt the project architect should consider implementing a variety of options to help create variations in the side elevations, and did not find it necessary to create 10-foot full-height recesses, given the narrowness of the lot. The project architect has incorporated roofline variation and detailed ornamentation through the provision of wood corbels, wrought iron railings, and a tile roof that is appropriate to a Spanish colonial building. So, just for reference, again, here are the color renderings of the side elevations. The last request, the applicant has submitted an application for a vesting tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes to subdivide the property into five for-sale condominium units. Staff can support this request based on the required findings and consistency with the general plan policies you see before you. So, staff would recommend that the planning commission approve the request of Robert Stafford to allow the construction of five new condominiums. And the applicant is here this evening. Should you have any questions for him, as is the project architect? And I'm also available to answer any questions you have of staff.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
I just have a comment that I really appreciated that historical report. I thought it was extremely well-done, and I really, really liked that.
Which, the first draft, the second draft, or the--
I know.
Which rendering? There were three.
Did anyone else have any other questions for staff at this time?
Not at this time.
Jill, I'm not sure if these are questions for you or for Robert. One of the questions is, the required parking has-- is, so they get a 20% break in the parking? Are there required incentives for that 20% break in parking because of its closeness to transit?
If you look within your staff report, the transit accessibility provision, which is included under one of the required findings, it's in a table. Section 18.20.050B states that if any portion of the lot is located within a quarter-mile of a transit stop with regular scheduled service during the weekday hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., the number of required parking spaces may be reduced by 20% of the normally required number of spaces. So, it's a built-in?
It's a built-in.
Yep.
So, there's no incentive required to the individuals who live--
No.
Okay. What was the other one? Oh, the other question I had was sort of the parking spot number one, and the fact that usually there's a five-foot setback on the side required of a building. Is that building space and not parking space? Because it seems to me like that parking space actually exceeds, goes into that five-foot setback that's typically required of a building. I just want an explanation, if that's something that is standard or something that is a bit unusual.
So, if we could come back to your question?
Okay.
That would be appreciated.
Okay.
Anything?
Wait for--
I have two questions. The first one is designed to make myself look foolish, because I seem to be having a math problem. As I read it, the required parking is 1.5 spaces per unit. There are five units. That would be 7.5 spaces, right? Plus 2.5, right? That's 10, isn't it?
The way we calculate required parking, you would calculate each of the uses separately. So, it's one set of spaces for required residential parking, and then the required parking spaces for the guests are calculated separately.
So, you just, the math works?
It does.
I just don't understand it? Okay. All right. And then, the other question I had was the planning department's architect actually went out to the site, looked at the renderings, and concluded that there's enough of a-- there's enough detail and enough interesting features that this is not too monolithic? The actual-- our architect decided that? Concluded that?
We-- I'm sorry, I was looking at something else, and I think I missed your question, but are you asking if the architect that conducted the peer review--
Yes.
--visited the site?
Yes.
No, he did not. We provided him with a full-sized set of plans, everything that was submitted to us, including the original rendering, I believe--
Yes.
--as well.
That's correct.
Is it a he or a she, the peer review arch--
He. He. We provided him with all of that.
So, did he-- I mean, because you really need to compare the adjacent buildings to the portion of the design at issue. So, how did the architect who was peer reviewing this work actually compare this design to the-- did he have pictures of the adjoining buildings?
Did they submit pictures in their original application?
I think the picture's included in the historical evaluation.
There-- I'm sorry, I'm repeating what Jill's telling me.
That's okay. It's actually really--
There's pictures in the historical evaluation. All of that was provided to the person doing architectural peer review. And of course, they rely on images and, you know, information that's provided off of Google Maps as well. So, to answer your question, did they visit the site? No, they did not. Okay.
Do you have Scott's answer, or should we move on to the applicant at this time? All right. Does the applicant, the applicant, do you have a presentation?
Shortly, yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Robert Shepherd of the Gotten Point for 436 Laurel Street. And this project really symbolizes the collaborative nature of both the general plan and of the peer review. As Ms. Lewis referenced, we worked very diligently with peer review architect, going back and forth to make sure that we addressed our concerns. More importantly, we reached out early on to the adjacent owners and renters to get their feedback, and what you-- And what you see in the south and north elevations are reflective of that collaborative process with the neighbors and sensitivity, not just to the front end area, but the sides. Because the sides, in many ways, are the front, these who live next to them. And we took pains to adjust, uh, the position of the windows and decks and the location of recycling to ensure that, for instance, the recycling wasn't immediately right outside the window of the house in this house. So, really, the collaboration that exists inside the general plan, when you look at it on a global sort of position, this project is great for peer reviews, it's good for the town, it's well within the half-mile. And on sort of a larger level, we start to get into the sensitivity of the project zoning. And what we see is, in many cases, we're minimizing the footprint. And one thing that you might not be able to tell us, we actually do have upper floor setbacks of 10 feet, both in the front and the back. So, we have, we're in compliance with the 10-foot, 10-foot upper setbacks in the front and back. And then during the process of a peer review, we brought in the sides. And Steve and I have seen Kellin, who are architects, they feel in greater detail about the responsibility to decide and to concern expressed. We're not maxing out the height. The block coverage is 5% of the floor. Floor-to-air ratio below the maximum. We exceed open space. And also, the landscape went to great detail to make sure that this assembly does not throw in a few trees and few plants with several planning efforts to ensure that there's good screenage, that they feel that they still have, you know, their sense of privacy. But when you really step back, you can see that this project really exemplifies sort of the collaborative room that we have now in St. Louis. We reached out to the general plan, to the zoning, the neighbors and the staff to ensure that it was compliant.
So, I have a question. On this, um, it says figure four, 436 Laurel, and it's pointing, and this, this rendering here, and it's pointing to 436 Laurel. Now, I'm assuming that this facade is actually what's on Laurel, and this is the side? Or is this, this actually all on Laurel?
Yeah, it was funny, I don't see the front, uh, elevation in front of you.
Now, we-
Do you have the final location? Read that on the screen.
That's the best we've got.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think that's, that's, okay. Okay, so it is.
Yeah.
So, that front, that skinny, that is actually the front elevation. This is the side that's gonna be next to this gray building here, right? Okay, so it's, okay. All right, thank you.
And I think they have your rendering that shows the final elevation.
Yeah.
A little bit outdated.
So, I think he ascends to depth of quality. And, and really, looking now to the adjacent apartment right, you can see it's within scale of the multifamily that exists. This parcel is also unique because it's a multifamily on all three sides. There's a community service building across the street, a agent who has worked on this project, and then a commercial going down the street. So, depending on the zoning perspective in terms of the position, it really is an anomaly because, and it's surrounded by multifamily on all two sides. Community service across the street, commercial further down the street. It really exemplifies, I think, aside from the city of Cotsdale, it's probably one of the federal utilities that's gonna go up. And we're very pleased with the work that Steve Kellin done in this regard.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Can you just repeat the statement? You said you were in compliance with the 10-foot side ba, setbacks, but-
In the front and the rear.
In the front and rear, okay. I was gonna say, gosh, that, that isn't what I read. Uh, in the front and the rear, okay. So, it's the side, it's the side elevations, which, which I, I understand. Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna give you a little bit of a hard time right here. So, policy LU 9.8, and they gave us all the policies and everything, which I really appreciate, encourage developers of newer, expanded multifamily residential projects to include gardening spaces for residents of the development as part of the landscaping requirement. And that's why I said I'm gonna give you a little bit of a hard time, 'cause I figured you probably, the trade-off was the trees.
You know, the, the challenge was the balancing act between the screen that's required to, to stop from the utility of the building and that kind of space. I, I think you guys know I started out as a landscaping contractor or some of those. And it's something I always tried to do, which is give people this space worth of dirt. And it may not seem like there's about 80 square feet that someone could park out, you know, be planted.
Planner boxes and things like that.
That's the challenge, is wanting to be sensitive to what's around and then wanting to comply with what's working in that network for us, which is give folks some space.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, well, thank you. Do we have anyone who wanted to make any public comments? Did, uh, you certainly don't have to if you don't want to, but it makes it easier for the record if you fill out a speaker slip. Fantastic, can I have that? I'll take it. Wow, so I have a speaker slip for Lori Rose. Would you like to, uh, to speak?
Shannon, can you ask? Um, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, but, um, so, my name is Lori Rose. My husband and I live right next door at 418 Laurel Street. And I was a little surprised to hear the developer or the proposed person who is proposing this saying that he talked to the neighbors, because I don't know anybody in our building that they spoke with, aside from the contractor coming over several months ago and saying they were gonna be taking some samples and that they were proposing this unit. I have some big problems with this unit. If you look in the neighborhood, there are few even three-story buildings in our neighborhood, much less four stories. So, this is totally out of proportion with everything around it. My husband has to park up front because we only have one parking space in our building, and parking is always at a premium. At times, he has to pull into the back of our carport area and wait for a space to open up. And that's against the building regulations of our property management. So, every time he does that, he takes a chance on getting his car towed. But when there's no places up front or in our area, there's no place to park. Also, I do have to say, I, personally, when they say this is going to be luxury condominiums, I like our neighborhood. We've lived there for 13 years. We are not a luxury neighborhood. Um, I'm comfortable there. My husband's comfortable there. I think most of the tenants in that area are comfortable there. But they propose these balconies on both sides of the buildings. They're just gonna be looking at the roof of the building to the other side and the side of our building. There's, I, I guess I don't understand why you have a balcony that looks upon the next-door building. I don't know what size of trees they're planning to plant to have this so-called screen. We all know it takes a long time for trees to grow. It's a beautiful backyard next door right now, and I know that maybe we can't halt progress, we can't change, you know? No, it just has to stay a single, uh, single-family dwelling. But there's a beautiful yard with a lot of trees back there, and they're all gonna be pulled up and yanked up. And I know none of them are big enough to say, no, you can't do that without permission, or maybe they're not the right kind. But, um, it's, it seemed to be a very disruptive thing that, in the long run, is not gonna provide a lot of benefits to the people in our neighborhood. And yes, it's close to mass transit, but I don't know a lot of people in our area that don't have two cars for every apartment. That's why we have such a problem with parking. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, was there anyone else who wanted to provide public comment? Thank you. I have Mariana Malalun?
Malalun.
Malalun?
So, hello, my name is Mariana Malalun. I also live right next door to a building, uh, so, quite this Laurel Street. And I would be, I'm on the ground floor that is immediately facing where this building is. My concerns, I'd mostly echo Lori's concerns about the scale of the building not matching surrounding neighborhoods. I think four stories is way too tall considering that even the commercial part of Laurel Street doesn't have like four stories. Also, it's one at most, two stories. So, we're concerned, um, I was sort of amazed to hear that I had been reached out to them while I got no notification. It was the same, or they have. Also, I called our rental agent and the rest of them, but they did not, you know, I talked to them after. So, I'm not sure who was reached out to, but tenant, Lori's tenant, we didn't get any notification at all. So, that being, that being said, I think my, my concerns are that the scale is out of whack. I am also very sad to see a single family in another fair fellow, like Dallasville. Neighborhood center for kids actually, uh, we used to have a safe word, uh, area of kids and kids in all of the neighborhood of Philly. It was a safe outdoor space. Um, at Halloween, they would have a, like, a brown tree house back there and invite all the kids. So, it was seamless, or when the, uh, tone, the style of the other dwellings, and it was a nice, safe outdoor space that we'd be using. Um, it's nice to hear the provisions of the major recesses, to make it less common, but I've heard myself have a patio that's, you know, I'm probably not getting to see the sun anymore, and it's a four-story building, right next to, and I'm on the ground floor. Um, I'm worried about the state of my plants, I'm worried about my privacy, because, you know, I have to worry about such things. So, that and the environmental impact we've got established, the red and trees and plants that are habitat for the birds and the bees and other insects that could be definitely done. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you.
So, I was just, uh, this is, I guess, a question for staff, although I think I, I know the answer. Looking at the, at the notice, um, there's no notice that went to 418. I'm guessing the owner of 418 lives somewhere else, and the notice went to the owner of 418 and not to the, the actual residents of 418?
That is correct.
Um, and is that consistent with, um, the notice requirements of the, of the ordinance code?
Yes, we require notification of property owners within a 300-foot radius, and it would be up to them. In the interest of full disclosure, I called Lori Rose to let her know of this meeting, so that was how she found out.
Um, and these are apartments, the, the folks who-
Yes.
-live in 418, it's an apartment building?
Yeah, if they were condos, they would've been notified, because there's unique property owners for each unit.
So, we don't have any requirement that a property owner, owner let his tenants know or, or do any sort of disbursement of information through the rental agency?
No, not in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other folks who wanna provide public comment?
Uh, excuse me, there was one of the tenant that's on her way here. I don't know if it's possible to wait a moment or not. She had to work late. I, I don't know.
Well, um, I don't know that we necessarily can wait, but if he or she, she?
She, yeah.
If she gets here, um, in the next couple of minutes, I imagine the public hearing won't be closed yet. We'll, we'll see how it goes. Um, so, um, does the applicant wanna respond to any of the comments that were made by, uh, by the residents of 418? You don't have to.
Just in brief.
Sure.
You know, I appreciate the concerns, and, um, we went through great lengths to send out the notice, and in fact-
I know it's very natural to speak to them.
Yeah.
But you have to speak to us, I'm sorry.
We sent out notices as required and complied with that.
Sure.
Uh, the neighbor that I spoke to lives in the apartment building, she's on the second floor, she has two cats, and we agreed to provide an awning so that she can keep her window open, uh, so the cats have air. And I talked to, uh, someone else that lives across the street, and, you know, you do the best you can as an applicant to comply with the law and send out the notices. I spent, uh, I think I've been there 15 to 20 times, and, uh, all I've heard is very positive feedback. And, uh, you know, I appreciate the change, it's difficult, but at that location in a TOD zone, I, I think this is a great addition to the neighborhood, and I think, once it goes in, I think they'll feel the same, but-
Just a quick clarification, you went to 418 Laurel 15 to 20 times? Or you went to the site?
The apartment, uh, building to the north.
Okay.
And I don't remember her name, but she lives on the second floor, and I can provide to you, but I mean, we-
Oh, it's not the individual neighbor? I was just wondering.
Oh, yeah, no, we did.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have a comment. Are we, are we still in public comment, or?
Um, well, we're still at part of the public hearing. Did you want to, did you wanna make a comment that you wanted response to?
No, I guess I can wait till we discuss it.
Oh, okay. Um, so, did we have any answer to Scott's question?
Uh, yes, we do. There is a section in the, um, in the zoning ordinance, and I just had that page open. Essentially, um, for a parking space that's right adjacent to, you know, up against the property line, I believe that was your question, does it-
Yeah.
-requirement for any kind of setback? Um, there is. The code requires that the area between the lot line and that parking space, that there be a three-foot landscape buffer. However, the code also allows for some flexibility with overall parking design standards if the project incorporates, um, some green building objectives. And I believe, let me just kind of turn to that page. Right. Okay.
So, would that require them to fill out a green?
Right. So, just, just for the, just to kind of make sure I-
I didn't see one.
-state this completely. Um, the section in the code is under alternative parking design standards, where an applicant can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the director that variations in the dimensions that are otherwise required by this section are warranted in order to achieve environmental design and green building objectives, including, but not limited to, great, um, certification under the green building rating system or equivalent, um, an alternative parking design may be permitted. We use this flexibility with the project that was recently presented to the planning commission at 1673 Laurel Street, where the applicant proposed, I think, several or a minimum of one electric car charging station. Um, it, too, I believe, was a narrow lot. It was another four-story building, of course, on Laurel. But in order to satisfy all the other, you know, the minimum parking requirements, they asked for some flexibility in that. So, that was a time where we use that provision in the code, and we can certainly have a discussion, um, with the applicant to let them know that this would be, um, this, um, criteria would need to be satisfied in order to make, um, the parking design work, in order to not, you know, provide for that buffer that would otherwise be required.
I'm sorry. Would that be a discussion, or would, would that be something that we could put in as-
Well, we would make it a condition of approval, but should the commission want to hear from the applicant what they may choose to, how they may want to respond to this, that's something that you can definitely, we can have, now would be the time to do that. But they certainly don't have to decide how, but we can include it as a condition of approval.
So, the, um, the alternative would be to provide the three feet, um, along the side landscaped, or if it's less than three feet, it would have to be some green building, um, uh, additional requirement?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions for staff on any of these issues?
Um, I was just, I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't really actually look at the, at the folks who'd received notice until this issue came up, and I, I noticed also that, that the adjacent house, 444 Laurel, isn't listed either in the notice, and I'm assuming that person also doesn't live in the home and it was sent somewhere else?
Yes.
All right.
She can't get in the door, she says it's locked. She was downstairs.
Um, why, why don't we hear from the applicant about the parking space?
Steve Kellin has some good ideas, Matt, regarding, like, address those issues. Good evening, uh, Steve Kellin, project architect. Just in response to that, uh, some ideas that come to mind might be, um, you know, thinking of an electric vehicle space, obviously, you know, more and more-
thinking of an electric vehicle space, obviously, you know, more and more tenants, particularly those that might be buying, you know, could have an electric vehicle, so, you know, that might be something we could consider for the space. Uh, another, you know, idea might be to look at, you know, could we reduce the width of the space, uh, right now where it's, uh, situated, uh, you know, we have a minimum dimension from, you know, the sideline of that parking space to the building that we need, and that's in the code for, you know, two-way vehi- uh, vehicular access. So, we don't, we can't pull the space, you know, down, about, so what I'm saying is, could we make it electric, make it narrower, which also would increase the, uh, or give us a more landscape buffer along the property line or fence, you know, side there. So, then we could plant, um, you know, continuation of what we're proposing, you know, along there, which could grow, you know, in more height and give more of a buffer than what we're proposing right now. And those would be some initial strategies I, you know, come to mind.
Can I make a suggestion that because of that closeness of that particular parking space to the adjacent building, that that would be the one that would be preferred to be an electrical, electric vehicle-
That's what I'm proposing, yeah.
-as opposed to-
Correct.
-having one of the other spots?
That's correct.
Any more questions for the project architect? I think we have one more, um, item of public comment.
I think you've already put something out.
That's quite all right. Is your name on there?
Yes.
Uh, Susan Fleming?
Yes. So, um, I just, I live, my apartment's right at the place, you know, right there, and I'm going to get, I guess, a lot of dust or something, and so I'm just trying to be concerned with, um, how not to, you know, not get all this dust in my life, because my window's right there. And so, I won't be able to open my window for a really long time.
You mean, because of construction?
Yeah. And so, that's my concern, because, you know, it's so hot on the second floor that I need to figure out how to deal with that. That's a big concern of mine, so, um, I need some help with that.
And just to be clear, you're at 418?
I am at 418, uh-huh, and my window looks over this pretty yard with all these birds and trees and things right now, and now pretty soon it's going to be a, ah, you know? But regardless of all that, I just want to make sure I can open up my window and not have all of this gasoline and things from cars or whatever into my window, or, or the, dig it up all the dirt and it's going to go inside my, my lungs and stuff. And so, I have no really alternative to opening up my window, and so, I don't, you know what I mean? So, is there some, that's what I want to say. I don't know what, yeah, so, if you have some kind of ideas for me, that would be really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
No.
Um, just, uh, just to address the last concern, and a lot of people, uh, aren't aware, if they're not, if they're not used to construction in their neighborhood, but there is a, um, a requirement that they abide by, uh, dirt and dust mitigation me- measures, correct, Joe?
Yes.
Great. So, hopefully, that, that will be alleviated during construction through those mitigation measures.
Um, through the chair, if I may.
Yes.
During the course of construction, when they do, when, if this project is approved and they do go forward to, um, submit plans to the building department for building permits, they will be required, um, to comply with best management practices and put into place certain measures for dust con- control. Um, one of the things that we could also consider tonight is adding a condition of approval that requires the applicant to send notice to the tenants, not the property owners, we can go a step further and do the tenants, to let them know, um, when construction will be occurring, um, the phasing and timing of construction, so that the tenants can, um, better, um, be aware and maybe plan ahead for when certain activity, types of construction activities, um, are going to take place. Um, but essentially, the concerns with dust and, you know, any kind of odor and, you know, noise, those are handled through the building permit issuance phase.
Um, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I, I motioned to close it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, um, discussion?
Yeah, I have, um, discussion, something I want to discuss. I mean, I'm pinning out here on my paper, you know, what a two, four-story building would look like in this area, because we don't have, I don't see anywhere we, we show where four stories is compared to two stories, and it looks pretty, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a, um, an architect, but, I mean, if you, if you draw, duplicate on top of the, what's there, I mean, that's going to have, that's going to look big in, in relationship to the other buildings, I mean, and, and we, what?
Two-story here, four-story there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I do-
I know, but I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm looking here from Laurel Street on 436, and what that's going to look like from Laurel Street as a four-story building, and I, I have concerns, I mean, we, um, I mean, the city council changed Transit Village from four to three stories, we went on Cherry Street and changed from four to three stories. I, um, I'm, I have concerns that this is going to look pretty big from our downtown. That's just, that's just my, my concern. I think it's a beautiful building, absolutely beautiful, but I'm just concerned about what that's going to, I mean, we're, I mean, we're looking from Laurel, that's it.
Any other discussion?
Um-
Scott?
Um, no.
Angela?
Yeah, so, I mean, in every time, um, I mean, every time we see, of course, a, a multi-unit building come in, or a mixed-use building come in, um, we have a lot of the same concerns about height, height and massing, and of course, parking, all of which I think are legitimate for the people that live in, in the area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and yet, my constant concern is that our, eh, our code clearly allows it, and therefore, it clearly complies, in fact, it more than complies. And, um, and so, while I'm sensitive to, I also do think it'll be beautiful but big in comparison to its, its surrounding. I don't know that it, it has the, um, the ease of transition that you'd like to see, though I also do know, in thinking of the general plan, that, that this is kind of the direction Laurel's going to. So, and I know people don't like to hear that, um, necessarily, but, um, that these buildings are what we are, what the general plan says it's looking to do, and this complies, like I said, even over complies, and so, that-
I, I mean, I struggle with the exact same things. I mean, I look at this house and this garden, uh, as it currently is, and I think, it's gorgeous. I mean, it is, it is a gorgeous, single-family house with a gorgeous garden, and if I had a choice between living next to this very beautiful, multi-unit, uh, building, or that very beautiful house, I would obviously much rather live next to that very beautiful house. Um, but, I mean, I, I'm sort of in the same boat as you, in that we have a, we have a zoning code, this complies with the zoning code, uh, with the exception of the, um, the setback, uh, and I was actually kind of secretly hoping that someone would come and complain about that issue, um, but no one really had, you know, had a problem with that, um, so it makes it very difficult for me not to approve a project that's consistent with the zoning, um, when, you know, the one area where it's not consistent with the zoning, no one's complaining about it.
Well, it's, I mean, the zoning stipulates the maximum, right?
It's true.
True.
That's absolutely true, but then you get to the point of, if you're going, if you're going to have a, a zoning code that allows four-story buildings, then you kind of have to ask yourself, where are they ever going to be okay? Um, or is there anywhere that they're ever going to be okay, in which case, um, if the answer is no, then you, you need to change the zoning. Um, and, you know, I look at this particular location, um, and compared to the other multi-unit buildings, this one is a much more attractive multi-unit building than the other multi-unit buildings, no offense to those who live in, um, in 418. So, you know, that, that's, you know, that's, that's kind of what I struggle with, but I think, without knowing exactly, um, how everyone is feeling about it, I, I mean, I have a very hard time saying no.
I actually walked around this entire neighborhood, um, and, you know, at first, my first impression when I went in front of the, the two buildings was, on the left was a single-family home, and on the right was a three-story apartment building. Now, it, it's actually two stories, but, um, it, it is almost the height of a three-story building. Um, and then, I looked at this, and I, I, I saw that, you know, you, you compare it to the Transit Village, which is going to be three stories, but the three stories are still forty-some-odd feet, and this is a four-story building that's 46 feet.
Right.
So, it's really more comparable to a three-story building than a four-story building, because they didn't build all the way up to the height, and they didn't get the, the 10% above height, um, beyond that. Also, when I walked around the block, I noticed that there are, in this particular area, several three-story buildings, and so, I, I, you know, I struggled with this, um, and I actually realized, partly from the applicant and partly from, um, the, um, presenters from 418, that the building next door is actually, I thought it was a single-family home, it's actually a, a multifamily, multi-story apartment, um, building, which actually extends almost the entire length of the property from looking at the pictures. Um, so, yeah, we'd all love to see more gardens and to, to keep it the way it is, but I kind of looked at it and thought, you know, it, it, it looks better than I anticipated it would.
I think we all agree, from designer view perspective, it's a nice-looking building.
Beautiful building.
Yeah, um, style-wise and, and, and in fitting, I, I think, and you're right, I mean, we're talking about, I'm sorry, 48-foot building, 46-foot building?
I think it's 46.
Right, and they could, um, our, our height is 60, I mean, our code lets them go up to 60 if I'm-
50.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, gosh, where am I at? Okay.
Yeah, plus 10%.
Right, plus 50, plus 10%. Um, yeah, it certainly didn't have the massing of a giant four-story building, it just looks, you know, it's going to look, it's going to look a little bit bigger next to the apartments for a while, but I think that's just the way moving forward happens on our main drag streets in Laurel.
All right, um, is there any more, any more discussion from-
Forty-five points, 45 feet, six inches.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion from the commission?
I have nothing else.
Um, I would entertain a motion, uh, recognizing that we were considering some, uh, modifications related to parking, and was there another one?
Uh, we want to-
And noticing?
The noticing and the-
Noticing in a, um-
Dirt and dust mitigation.
The dirt and dust mitigation's already included, right? It, so the noticing for the-
It was the noticing for the construction, um, there was discussion about that, and then there were discussions about modifications with respect to parking.
About the parking setback, about, um, about using the green building standards? Okay. How would one phrase such a motion?
Um, if I may, through the chair, um, we could, um, draft a condition that would simply require the applicant to comply with the alternative, um, parking area design provision, and then they could look at the different options that would be available to them, and as long as they included those in them, in the revised, um, draw, in the revised submittal, then, um, staff could make a determination that they have met that requirement.
And?
I'm, I'm, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'd really like to see what the thing looks like from Laurel Street in rendering. Are we past that point?
Well, I mean-
No, from Laurel Street, that, I mean, from, um, from, from this view, right here on this picture, this is from, this is from San Carlos Avenue, and then here's Laurel. I'd like to see what this thing looks like.
Well, the only way we could do that would be to continue the matter.
Yeah, then I'm going to make a motion to continue the matter.
All right, you can, you can do that? Do you want, you want to make a motion to continue the matter, so that we can get rendering?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Before, um, before I seek a second of that motion, do we have that yet? Uh, a rendering that shows the, um, shows the building?
From San Carlos Avenue, looking down Laurel?
Yes.
Um, we do not, um, but for the sake of discussion, we'd be happy to pull up a Google, you know, street view for you to look at right now.
I'm looking at that.
I think that we have that, um, I think that, uh, I think Ms. Bergman is, is concerned that it doesn't really give you a sense of, um, what a, uh, a 46, 45 and six, 45-foot, six-inch building will look, um, from that direction.
That's the, yeah, yeah.
So, um-
May I propose an alternative to-
Well, there's a, there's a motion, it could die if anyone seconds it.
Oh.
Um, so, is there a second for the motion to continue? Hearing none, uh, the motion fails. Do you have a, uh, an alternative you want to suggest?
Yes, I'm wondering if, um, perhaps the, uh, project architect could show me on this telephone pole approximately where, where the height of the building would, would come, and I can-
Well, actually, I'm sure we can get it pulled up, right?
Sure.
Um, there's a, there's, there's a picture, it's a figure, what is it?
Figure four.
Figure four.
Figure four, could you pull up figure four on the screen for us, please, Joe?
It's, um-
Do we not have it in our presentation?
Yeah, it's part of, yeah, it's part of A.
So, in that, uh, is in front of the house. That's 35 feet, so 40 would be more like here, so it'd be more like this height, that would be back.
It would be above this light.
Yeah.
That's more doable, this is scary, but that's-
That would be 50 feet, right, 45, 45 feet right here.
Do you reset the view?
No, no, but that would be, that's sort of pulled closer to you.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that would actually be helpful, um, first of all, I don't know if that architect could, you know, give a reasonable-
I, I like it.
Yeah, I could, can give a reasonable estimate, but, you know, just a, a point of reference may not be enough to kind of portray-
Play on the screen.
Kind of get a sense of the-
Give him a mark.
Right.
-the massing and height that I think the commission is looking for.
Okay.
But-
That's okay, it was just an alternative, I don't need it, uh, it won't affect my decision.
Do we know the height of the two adjacent buildings?
No, but from past experience, my estimation of telephone poles is about 35 feet. Okay?
That's not helpful at all, Scott.
Well, if you look at the telephone pole that's here, which is probably pretty close to being in front of the, the property-
Uh-huh.
And add another third of it, you can get a sense of the height.
It would be off our picture.
Yeah, this is possible.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean, I was thinking the same thing.
I shouldn't, now that I'm the chair, I probably shouldn't utilize humor quite as much as I did in the past. Um, yeah.
Um, but I, I do, before we make a motion, I, I did look at the conditions of approval, and I, I, I'm not sure where the dirt and dust mitigation falls under there, so I want to make sure that, um, if we do approve this, um, that, within that, we make sure that we address dirt and dust.
I'm assuming it's part of A, I mean, excuse me, 8A?
You know, what I would recommend through the chair is, we can just add an additional condition to make it absolutely clear.
Okay.
So that there's no ambiguity.
Okay. All righty.
So, that would make three conditions, then?
Three conditions. Yes, it would.
Um, I can, I think I can make this motion, so let me just find that page.
All right.
Got it, thank you. I move that the Planning Commission approve the request for design review, conditional use permit, and tentative map approval for five new condominiums at 436 Laurel, APN 050-071-080, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the code compliance certificate slash conditional use permit and the tentative map certificate, including the three additional conditions that the commission just discussed. Is that an acceptable motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Motion passes three to one. All right. Moving on to report on recent city council actions.
Right now, the city council is on recess and is set to return on Monday, August 25.
Planning Commission comments or reports?
I would like to see, because I know the zoning code is coming back to us, I would like to have a discussion about notification to renters and adding that in, so that we don't have that problem in the future.
Any other Planning Commission comments or reports, since Scott stole mine?
I have none.
None? Any correspondence?
None received.
Any planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
Yes. I'd like to inform the commission that the Planning Division has received a submittal from Legacy Partners for the Transit Village. Plans were submitted on Wednesday, August 6. And staff is currently in the process of distributing those to relevant departments and doing the review against the conditions of approval, the mitigation measures, everything that was adopted as part of the Plan Development Plan under ordinance 1468, which includes mitigation measures as well, in addition to all of the conditions of approval tied to the residential component of the project and the commercial buildings, as well as the transit center parking area itself. And we'll be certain to let you know, let you know when that will become, will be in a, in a state that's more ready to be presented before the Planning Commission. Our next Planning Commission hearing is actually going to be on a Tuesday, September 2, due to the Labor Day holiday. And we potentially have two items that could come before you. One is a minor subdivision. It's just a subdivision of a single lot into two on Eaton Avenue. And then, the second is the proposed 20-unit condominium project at 777 Walnut. That project was also peer-reviewed by an outside professional architect who provided us with some comments that we're in the process of reviewing. And we're going to take a look at those before we bring it back to you. Just a couple of other items related to more long-range planning, long-range planning project endeavors, one of which is the housing element update. We are going to be scheduling two community workshops on Wednesday, September 3, and then following, and then again, immediately one week after, on Wednesday, September 10. So, again, that's September 3 and September 10. That will be here in this room at 6:30. And the purpose of that meeting is to hear from the public concerning the policies and programs that we could be looking into as we approach the planning period for 2015, all the way to 2023. So, this time around, it'll be an eight-year document as opposed to a five-year document. And I believe that concludes my updates, unless there's any others? No?
All right. Well, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.